I'd like to call the Select Board meeting order for April 30th, 2025 at 5:06 PM. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. So adding items to the agenda, I would like to add the Route 4 speed limit reduction request update. Is that okay for you, Sarah?
That's good for me. We'll put it, where were you thinking of putting it? Sarah Tully at the end?
Yes, under number eight C.
C, okay. And then we're going to table the minutes, which is 6B. Does that sound good?
Yep.
And then I'd like to propose that we do public, just because this meeting is going to be a little scattershot, I'd like to propose that we move public comment to the next item and take public comment and then move to the planning commission piece. And then that way, folks don't have to stay after the public, after the planning commission is over if they wanted to make public comment. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's good for me.
Okay.
Good for you, Sarah?
Yes, that works for me, but does it allow Stephanie time?
I think based on the people in the room, my guess is this is going to be just two minutes.
Oh, okay, great.
So, okay, and that's it. No other additions to the agenda. So we will start with public comment then.
Well, if you could just make a motion, Seth.
Oh, okay, to, to...
So I'll move to make those amendments to the agenda, adding Route 4, tabling the minutes, and moving public comment to the next item.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving along. Now we are going to do public comment. Does anybody have any public comment? Nobody in the room?
No one in the room. So Carol has her hand up.
Raise.
Okay.
Carol, go ahead.
Hi, I'd just like to make sure that during the planning commission, when you're talking about the land use rights of property owners, that we will have time to comment, correct?
Um, we won't have public comment during that period of time. Um, I think what we'll do is, because we'll have public comment now. When we get through the planning commission piece, let me just ask, were you planning on having a discussion with the board? Or with...
I think it's going to be very challenging for somebody who's virtually listening to the discussion to have much to say.
I have all the maps that, I have all the maps, so I have a lot of questions regarding the land use rights.
Okay, so why don't we throw your comment now? And then we'll ask Stephanie to address that comment then. And of course, anything that you hear will be part of public comment for future meetings. So feel free to go ahead and flag your questions and provide your comment. And then we'll just go from there.
No, that's not right.
Okay, no, so I'd just like to start by, I saw the proposed map, the draft, and there's a lot of residential properties that are now going to be protected. So I want to know from the planning commission and from the select board that if that is adopted, what does that mean for the property owner's rights to their own land that they've probably been paying a residential property tax on?
Got it.
I'm wondering how somebody would have even seen them.
Yeah, so let me just clarify. So we'll go back to public comment and we'll leave that.
So from one year of private meetings, I got a...
So this, just so you're aware, Carol, what they're talking about is not the town regional plan. That's part of the planning commission. This is the county regional plan for the RRPC. So do you want to, so different topics, different maps, different considerations. But go ahead if you want to go with public comment and we'll start over.
Do you have anything? Do you have anything, Brian or Carol?
Yes. Yes, I actually, we put in writing to be on the agenda tonight. And I don't see that we are, what, can you ask, can you tell me why? We put it in almost a week ago. We asked to be on the agenda. We've asked before and you kind of ignore us, like you do all the time.
Um, to the select board, you can refer to the email that I have attached to the request that they were instructed that there was nothing for them to discuss with the select board, that the select board had control over.
Okay, we see that here.
Select board does have control over. They actually, they actually adopted a policy that violates open meeting law by having that door shut during meeting hours. That's what I want to talk about. And that's why I wanted it on the agenda. You can't shut the door and let it lock behind you when you're all in there. Otherwise, you're breaking the open meeting law by having a, you have a quorum in there. You can't lock the door behind you.
Understood. Thank you for your...
It's been happening on a regular basis. We have videos of it. Why aren't we on the agenda tonight?
We've got, Brian, we've got your comment. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Brian.
All right.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Okay, so that's it for public comment. But you move it forward to the Regional Planning Commission, 2026 Regional Plan. You're going to the Select Board here?
Can we just ask folks online just to mute themselves? I always wonder if that is...
Anything else? Could you please mute yourselves? Thank you.
Okay, well, wonderful.
Okay, Stephanie, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank you for making the time for us tonight. Um, I'll start with an introduction. I know Larry and I just met your zoning administrator. Did you say my name?
Right, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. And Sarah, and I'm familiar with Seth. So I'm Stephanie Berg. I'm a planner with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And I am one of three of our staff who are out conducting meetings like this with all of the 27 municipalities that are part of the Rutland region. So the folks that we serve as the Regional Planning Commission. So I know Larry because he's our commissioner. He's been part of the review team from the board that's been helping with this regional plan update. And obviously, I know what your role is as the zoning administrator. Would you like us later to know who you are?
Sure. I'm Jack. I'm the chair of the zoning board.
Okay, wonderful. So that gives me a sense of just kind of the different roles that people are coming from in terms of this discussion tonight. So I did bring three copies of kind of some presentation materials. I'll kind of walk folks through.
You guys want to share one?
There's extra copies on that side of the table. Um, this packet here is one that was sent ahead of time for the prep.
Okay.
So just, I know Larry did some prep. You mentioned you've been at the planning one training.
Right. I also did.
Okay, so you guys have some good context and background about some of the, you know, more detailed information that I'm not going to be going into tonight. I'm going to have, you know, I'm going to work from the assumption that folks kind of have a general understanding of the terms that I'm going to be using and you've got a little bit of a contextual background. But I brought the materials in case we want to refer to them for some particulars, okay? So, um, we have been, you know, working on an update to the Rutland Regional Plan now for over a year. We kicked off back in the fall of 2023. Our, all of our staff have been working very hard through 2024 to get us to this point. Other folks from my office probably have been at meetings during Phase 1 or Phase 2 of engagement for this plan update. Because we've really taken a commitment to engaging with the whole community throughout the plan update, not just at the end and during the hearing phase that's required in statute. So I'm here in the third and final phase of community engagement, Phase 3, which we're calling alignment, because we're now ready to basically share the first full draft of the plan with the public during the alignment phase. Because we're hoping to be able to make sure that everything is looking good in terms of the plan's goals, policies, actions, and basically the course that we've laid out for the next eight years. Um, there are two primary questions that we're asking the community members to think about and react to in this alignment phase of engagement. And those are the two questions kind of on the cover page of this live deck. Does the plan reflect the right community economic development priorities for the Rutland region? And do these priorities make the region a place that you want to live, work in? Okay, because at the end of the day, that's really what community economic development is all about, is creating a place that you want to stay if you live here, or maybe move here if you, no, don't live here. Um, so in terms of our session tonight, it's going to be, you know, part of a little bit of me kind of giving you some information, and then it's going to be more discussional with the materials that I brought with me, right? So I want to start just for, you know, anybody who hasn't been part of the process over the last year or anybody, you know, joining online, a brief summary of what the regional plan is and why it's important. I'm going to talk about the regional plan elements in the sense of giving you an overview of what are the plan chapters. And tonight, we're going to do a bit of a deeper dive into the land use chapter and specifically the regional future land use map. Okay? And then I'll wrap it up with a summary of some opportunities for input. Okay? So, regional plan, purpose and design. Just to recap here, you know, it's not like the Rutland Regional Planning Commission thought of this type of plan on their own and was like, oh, I think this is really needed. This is a great idea. Let's do this. This is, this actually is laid out in from on statute as a requirement of all the regional planning commissions in the state of Vermont to develop. Okay, so Title 24, Sections 4302 and 4347 are what I would consider kind of the enabling legislation that directs regional planning commissions to perform this kind of work. So what is the regional plan? It's a comprehensive eight-year plan that's intended to guide and accomplish coordinated and efficient community economic development in a way that will balance economic development with social, cultural, and environmental priorities. So it is a plan that's a lot broader than just a more purist economic development document. Um, and our plan will be ready for adoption in 2026. So the eight-year window would be '26 through '34. That's kind of the time horizon that we're trying to cover with this plan. So it's intended to help shape the pattern, design, and function of communities in a way that will hopefully best meet future needs. And what distinguishes this plan from others working in the community economic development arena is that, you know, the regional planning commissions are responsible for really doing an analysis and presentation of, an analysis of present and future land uses and identifying areas that we'd like to see prioritized for growth or conservation. Okay, so none of the other community economic development players, you know, do that, right? So these maps, you know, nobody else does that. That's the role of the regional planning commissions. That's kind of our niche in community economic development. Um, and so that is really what we consider kind of at the core or the center of the regional plan. Um, in terms of making sure that the plan, you know, conforms or includes all of the statutorily required pieces, you know, we've got that covered. But we also want to make sure that the plan is reflective of what the Rutland Regional Planning Commission values in terms of core design principles, is I think how I characterize them. So the plans' core design principles are that it be flexible, it be locally led, it be equitable and sustainable, and outcome-driven. So these align really well with the Regional Planning Commission's Declaration of Inclusion in Title 6 Plan. Um, so when I say flexible, I mean, it provides flexibility to meet the needs of 27 unique municipalities in our region. None of you are the same in any way, shape, or form, right? We come in all different sizes and configurations. And so we still, we were striving as we update this plan to make sure that it is flexible, to meet the needs of all of our 27 members. We wanted to make sure that it was locally led by doing things like we're doing now and having an engagement strategy that started basically at the kickoff of the plan update in order to increase the probability of success and better ensure that some communities are not favored over others, right? We want to make sure that we have local input informing the vision in this plan. Um, the equitable and sustainable design principles are important to demonstrate that embracing diversity, equity, and climate resilience is going to be key, we think, to achieving our community economic development goals. And we want this plan to be outcome-driven, right? We want to have goals and policies with clear defined actions to be performed by the Regional Planning Commission. We're not in the job of, you know, doling out actions for others to complete with indicators of progress, right? So measures that we can gauge how well we as an organization are doing towards achieving the goals of this plan. All right, so quick review of the plan elements. Again, we didn't get arbitrarily choose what this plan includes or doesn't include. It's prescribed in statute, Title 24, Section 4348A, kind of lays out the plan, they call them plan elements. So we kind of translated that into chapters, really. So the graphic is just kind of reinforcing that concept of land use being at the core or center of our plan. And, um, in addition to the discussion of land use, we cover the topics of economic development, cultural resources, transportation, housing, community facilities and public utilities, enhanced energy, the working landscape, so thinking agriculture and forestry industries, as well as natural resources and climate resilience. So that's like everything in the kitchen sink, right? My favorite vineyard is flavor of New York Super Fudge Chuck, it's like it's got everything in there. So it's a very broad, diverse plan to really cover that whole umbrella of community economic development. These are all the ingredients that you're really need, you need to focus on when you're dealing with that topic. So with that in mind, we'll kind of transition into looking more focused at just land use. And I want to start with kind of that Act 181 that was passed into law in June of last year and how that overhauled Vermont's land use planning framework. So it was intended to modernize how Vermont directs public investments to designated areas and hopefully speed up Act 250's transition to what they call location-based jurisdiction. Okay, so in the prep materials that I handed out, there was a good overview of kind of Act 181, um, the designated areas that are covered in the state designation program, as well as what's meant by location-based jurisdiction. And we'll talk about that a bit tonight because that applies here in the...
Okay, yeah. Quick question?
Yeah.
The land use categories, are those intended to be adopted like as we're thinking about our zoning at the local level? Or are these words like village center, downtown center, enterprise area, hamlet, rural ag for us? Like, should we be thinking about these terms? Are these more for your use, I mean, for the county planning use?
So the one thing that Act 181 didn't change was the state's land use planning goal. So that's the same.
Okay.
But it standardized the land use categories that are to be used in regional planning.
Okay.
So prior to this, I can give you a just quick example.
Yeah.
Um, prior to this, here's the current plan for Mendon, or the current regional future land use maps with Mendon section of it. There are development constrained areas, high-density development areas, low-density development areas, medium-density development areas.
Okay.
Okay, so those were kind of the land use categories that were, you know, developed back quite some time now when that particular version of the future land use map was prepared. And you didn't have any requirement for there to be consistency across the 11 different regional planning commissions. So each planning commission could have basically come up with their own land use categories, which makes it a bit challenging to have a conversation about your region's land uses in the context of its neighbors, which they are not necessarily using the same land use categories as you are.
Understood.
Right, so I don't think that this is intended to necessarily translate down into local zoning.
Okay.
Or even town future land use maps that you find in your town plan. We would certainly hope that the type or intensity of land use that is shown in the regional future land use map would be compatible with whatever type of or intensity of land use you're mapping at the local level.
Okay.
Okay, but there's, I don't think there's any, you know, expectation that you're using...
The same terms.
Right?
Thanks.
So, so kind of, I want to backpedal just a, just a step. Um, I want to recap what is the state's land use goal, right? Because it is the goal for our regional plan's land use chapter as well. And that's to plan development in a way that will maintain historic settlement patterns of compact downtown and village centers separated by rural countryside. You will see as I'm walking through kind of the different land use areas and the percentage of land area that those comprise in the region and then in Mendon specifically, how those support that goal. Okay, so again, concentrating development in compact downtown and village centers separated by more rural countryside. Okay, so Act 181 introduces 11 new land use categories. Seven of those categories are really what we would consider growth areas. And three of them are considered more rural areas. Um, we can kind of walk through them as they apply to Mendon. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about a land use category that may not be in your community, right? Um, but the gist being, you know, there are now, there are now 11. If you do the math, seven and three is not 11. So the 11, one is a hamlet. And a hamlet is really nothing more than a dot on a map. And if you read the prep material about what constituted a hamlet, it gives you a sense for, it's more of a historic recognition as opposed to a land use area. So in terms of the land use categories, if you look from left to right, the downtown center, village center, planned growth area, and village area, those four categories of land uses are what align with the new state designation program. So think, you know, you folks have a village center designation in Mendon. So that's what I'm talking about when I say the state designation program. That will be changing as a result of Act 181. Um, and, you know, the downtown center and the village center, those future land use areas are eligible for a center designation. And the planned growth areas and village areas are eligible for a neighborhood designation. That new program is going to be rolling out beginning of next year. And what, you know, what has been told at this point by the state is that any existing village or downtown designation will transition into the new program and retain all of its benefits. So I don't think, you know, when we get into a discussion about Mendon's particular village center, I'm going to, we'll talk a little bit about the boundaries of that. But know that your benefits should transition for that particular land use area into a, the center bin of benefits. And those are kind of outlined again in the prep materials.
So village center goes to be a center.
Downtown centers and village centers.
Right, and we don't have the downtown center. We've got the village center, and that will just automatically become one of the newly designated state centers.
Yes.
Okay.
And if you have planned growth areas or village areas mapped in your community, those would become eligible for neighborhood designation and neighborhood benefits.
Okay.
Okay, so you do have that area.
We do have that.
Which we'll get to, yeah. So kind of keeping in mind with those four land use categories, they also align with the location-based Act 250 jurisdiction tiers. So if you have areas in your community that are mapped as one of those four land uses, we'll be having a conversation about Tier 1B, which you do. So we'll be talking about that tonight. So I just wanted to give you a sense of kind of the framework and how the new land use categories align with the new state designation program and the location-based Act 250 jurisdiction tiers. They're two separate things, but they all align with those same four land use categories. Okay?
Yeah.
Any questions on kind of the big picture framework structure? Okay, so I'm going to walk you through on a very high level the region because I want you to have a sense for context, okay? So if you understand kind of regionally what's happening, I think a conversation about Mendon is, you have some context, okay? So in terms of those downtown and village center future land use areas that will become eligible for center benefits throughout the region, we're looking right now at 39 designated centers, which is an increase from what's currently enrolled in the state designation program. From 34, we're going to be adding five more that will be, receive the benefits of this program just because they're now mapped in the regional future land use map. They have not undergone application to the program, okay? So we're going to be, we're targeting nine downtown centers and 30 village centers, of which Mendon will be one. I want to point out that the land area for those two land use categories, downtown centers and village centers, is less than half of, half of percent of the regional land area. It's landing at .4, okay? But it contains 6.5% of buildings. And 26 of our 27 towns will have either a downtown or a village center future land use. And 26 of our 27 towns will, will have either a downtown or village center future land use category in their community. Okay? So, shift down, down the line, in terms of the mapping procedure, you know, downtown centers and village centers were mapped first, then we moved into planned growth areas and village areas because they kind of surround those. Those two areas designated for growth of one of those growth areas become eligible for neighborhood benefits under the new state designation program in 2026. In the region, we're looking at 16 designated neighborhoods with nine planned growth areas and seven village areas. Those two combined will occupy 2.1% of the land area in the region and contain 32.1% of buildings. So 14 of our 27 towns we're targeting as having planned growth or village area, land use categories in their communities and eligible for the neighborhood benefits. We get outside of those, and there are three other what are considered kind of growth areas. There are transition areas, which Mendon has. There are enterprise areas, which Mendon does not. And enterprise areas are kind of more industrial, commercial, mineral extraction, kind of larger personal activities, land uses that follow to that category. And then we have the resource-based recreation areas. The resource-based recreation areas really need to have a large enough recreation industry such that there is supporting infrastructure for that, like shops and housing and all of that kind of stuff. So it's not meant to try to map any potential place where there's a recreation use. It's more about areas that are kind of heavily recreation industries, like the ski resorts, like the lake towns, things like that. Okay? So you have a little bit of that in Mendon, up by Maiko.
So shops and, you know, things other than the actual recreation itself that looks like are on it, but I'm wondering, is that because there's housing there in that little corner?
Yeah.
My guess is that we haven't thought about Airbnbs and the support that like in Mendon, you know, the number of Airbnbs that support the recreation.
That would bleed out beyond, I think, the eligibility criteria for that land use area's boundaries, but I think it's a worthy question. And I'll, kind of as we get through this kind of conversation, I'll be guiding you how to direct your questions.
Okay.
Okay? So, just giving you a sense of, you know, seven land use areas that are really targeted as growth areas, I wanna hammer home the point that the percent of total land area designated for, for that land use, it's 6% in the region. Okay? So when you look at 2%, it is in Mendon, I want you to have, have that in mind, right? So we'll move over to the next slide where we're looking at the land use areas that are really more designated for the lower-density growth or conservation. So those are the three rural categories. We've got rural conservation, rural ag forestry, and rural general. So rural conservation, 42.2% of the land area in the region, only 5.7% of buildings. That category is in all 27 towns. It's, think of areas that you have your critical natural resources, or there are, you know, steep slopes, areas where just because of natural features are unsuitable for development. Rural ag forestry, 35% of the land area in the region is mapped in that category, with 6.4% of buildings. All 27 towns have that land use category mapped. It is determined at this point in time by any property as of 2023 that was enrolled in the current use program. Okay? Either for agriculture or forestry, that is how that land use area is mapped.
That explains, I was like, why are those parcels there and it's because of current use?
Yes.
Okay?
So anything left over that wasn't one of the seven mapped areas for growth or rural conservation or rural ag forestry becomes rural general. Okay? So rural general, about 17% of the land area in the region, but 40% of the buildings fall within that land, land use category. So, you know, there's opportunity for growth in the rural general areas, but it's, it's more appropriate for lower-density growth. Okay? So the 2026, oops, sorry, 2026 regional future land use map is really intended to guide development by designating areas for growth and conservation based on the existing environmental infrastructure and community factors. So that's the big picture, that's the context. You ready to drill down into Mendon? So, the map itself, like the land use categories were standardized across the state, the map, the mapping methodology was also standardized, right? Prior to this, each 11 of the regional planning commissions could come up with their own methodology for how they were going to interpret the land use categories from statute and then translate those into map boundaries on a plan. So, you know, this, the Vermont Association of Planning and Development Agencies, otherwise known as BAFTA, if you're in the planning kind of world, at the beginning of this year, issued a standardized methodology that all the regional planning commissions are supposed to be using to actually develop the boundaries for these different land use categories on a map. So, with Mendon, you've got kind of your own pie chart, and there's a lot of green, right? Which is the rural conservation. You know, 85% of Mendon's land area is mapped as that rural conservation category, followed by just under 9.5% for rural ag forestry. So basically, any parcels in the current use program. And then what's left after those two rural categories are mapped, and we'll talk about your growth areas in a bit, because they, you know, kind of fall down in terms of the percent of the land area, is the rural general. So there's about just under 3% of the land area that's mapped as rural general. So if you take those three categories of the areas that are really intended more for either lower-density development or conservation, you're looking at just a hair over 97%, which is pretty close to the 96, 94% in the region.
So as I look at that map, there's obviously a lot of rural conservation, but there are a lot of areas where we have, you know, residential 1, res 2, like they're all residential areas, and they're in the conservation. You know, I'm thinking about Journeys End and Woodward and, you know, near Metal Lake.
So rural conservation land use area does not preclude low-density development. It just prioritizes conservation as the appropriate land use in that area.
Okay.
So development is, is possible, but there may, it may be more constrained.
And what do you mean by constrained? Does this mean that?
Well, there might be, if you're, if the development triggered Act 250, yes.
Okay.
Because of, likely there's some natural resource feature that is in that area, or the soils might not be suitable for antiseptic, you know, things like that. So if you look at the prep materials and you really kind of look at the criteria that define that land use category, it'll give you a little bit greater insight, I think, into why the areas are mapped the way they are. But that being said, this is the first time we're sharing the map with the public. So we're not, you know, it's, this is at like, at the hearing stage, we're like, well, here's the map, hope you like it. We're, this is the starting point of a conversation with our towns. So, you know.
And I asked that knowing that earlier in our public comment part, we had a citizen who was concerned at the local level, rightly so, about what conservation designation would mean when we, when or if, not saying that we are, going to land on any type of conservation designation for areas where people currently live. And I similarly share that same level of inquiry for what this would mean if the county were to put, you know, that designation onto already, you know, developed residential communities in the town.
Right. So I think that there's an opportunity, you see a lot of the kind of yellowy biscuit color that kind of fell into the rural general, that I think is intended in areas that are heavily mapped as rural conservation to reflect that kind of existing settlement pattern.
That could be. I, I did look at some of the prep materials, and what I, what I realized knowing some of these parcels is that, that almost mirrors Google Maps, like where land has been cleared as opposed to where settlement is. And that may be still consistent with what you said, but, but there are other areas that, that I'll be interested, I'm sure at the end you'll say, how will you provide our feedback?
Yep.
But where I could see areas where I would think, you know, even if they isn't cleared in the same way that Google Earth can see open cleared areas that still have development, you know, you know, in this part of the, this part of the town, where's Journeys End?
Just down.
Yeah, Woodward Road, that's another one, and then Journeys End is all green. So those are areas that kind of made me, you know, focus my attention.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep. So, in terms of the areas that have been proposed as more of those growth land use categories, I'm gonna start at the bottom and work my way up. So the darkest pink is mapped as village center. So you, Mendon has a village center designation, and that boundary does not look like your current boundary because it's been expanded. It, it, the regional planning commission, based on the definition of a village center in statute, had the ability to expand the previously approved village center boundary under the state designation program because certain criteria were met for that land use category. And the only thing that that does for the town is potentially expand the area in which you are eligible for a center benefit. Okay? So where, where, we, we found opportunities to expand benefits, we did. And Mendon is a good example of that actually playing out.
And by benefit, do you mean, is this?
Under the state designation program.
Yeah. So this would be benefits in terms of like, easier to develop?
Whatever your current state village center benefits are, will transition into a new designation program that apply in a larger area.
Okay.
Okay? So yeah, I'm not gonna.
And that just happened?
I'm not gonna tell you what the benefits are because that's really not my lane.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but that, the fact that you expand that by the definition, that, we don't have to do anything.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Any existing village centers or downtown designations transition into the new program, retaining all their benefits.
Okay.
That's what has been stated to date. And there's, you know, there's an opportunity to expand just the physical location in which those benefits are, are seen for Mendon.
Okay.
Because that larger area meets the, the village center designation in the, from a land use category perspective.
And if for some reason the planning commission and the select order, whatever, the community said, well, we don't, we wanna keep our smaller one.
You could definitely.
We would, that we would provide that feedback in that way. Okay, all right.
Absolutely.
I don't know why, I'm just wondering, like, if that's gonna happen.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. So there is, in terms of land area, we, you know, your village center occupies the smallest percentage of land area in the community. The next step up from that would be the resource-based, resource-based recreation area, this area spilling over here from Pyco. It's not one of those core four, so it's not really tied to the state designation program or the Act 250 tier local-based jurisdiction, but it is mapped that way because of its association with the ski resort. Moving up again, you have a transition and infill area that pretty much is this section of Woodward Road corridor that, you know, historically I think was more, Hotel District? Right? Do you wanna call it that? So.
Sleepy Hotel District these days.
I know. I remember when it was the Hotel District.
Me too.
Yeah. I'm beautiful, I can't wait, I'm a little, no, there it is. The transition and infill areas are still designed, are designated for higher-density growth, but they, they don't meet the, the criteria for being mapped as downtown village center planned growth or village area. So they, you know, there's, there's an opportunity for, I mean, as the category name implies, it's kind of that transition area, it's not as, it doesn't need quite the highest intensity development that's in those other four, those core four, but there's an opportunity here for infill primarily. So you notice that it's. And strip development is not allowed. So, new development in this area is really, to the extent the geography allows, you're, you know, the intent is to form a network of streets, kind of building off that corridor for infill or expanded higher-density growth. Okay?
So if we were just talking about, you know, sleepy hotel district, if some of those buildings were to be rehabilitated and the same use were to be used, are you, are you saying that there would have to be a new consideration of?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, you know, what's intended there is not to promote strip development. Okay? You've already got existing development along the corridor. It's talking about, you know, reinvesting in those properties, like you're describing that are maybe vacant and need to be repurposed or brought back online as the same thing or something else, or infill, or again, maybe kind of thinking about building off of that corridor and expanding so that it doesn't look like strip development. Yep. So, wrapping it up, around your village center, so that darker pink area, we have a village area, which is intended again for higher-density growth, and it, it basically surrounds your village center, so that lighter pink area, one of the core four, downtown village center, planned growth area or village area. There is no planned growth area mapped in Mendon, so we won't kind of talk about that one. But I wanted to, now that you have a sense for which of the land use categories are occurring in Mendon and kind of at, at what degree, you know, kind of now transition into how do you provide input on this, back to the regional planning commission? Because you have the C team tonight. Logan would be the A team, Devin would be the B team, I'm the C team. So any like real, like nitty-gritty questions, you know, I'm not prepared to be responding to on the spot. you know, I'm not prepared to be responding to on the spot right now. So what we're asking for our towns to do is provide all questions about the map and/or boundary adjustment requests in writing to Logan Solomon. And so underneath your pie chart is all of the instructions here under the number one. We're asking, you know, for those to be submitted within three weeks of tonight's meeting. So we're targeting by May 22nd because, you know, even though it feels like 2026 is like forever away, it is not. In our world, you know, we have to have everything wrapped up by midsummer to get this out for professional publication and get it all ready for all of the, you know, steering stage. So we're, we're, we're needing to gather input on this and make any final decisions on, you know, the map by midsummer. So we're asking within three weeks for you to submit any questions or, you know, like I'm hearing you say now that I really would like to see more biscuit yellow up in that green where there's already development, right? Those kinds of things.
Okay.
You know, you obviously would work together as a community.
Yeah.
Come up with your final list of, of things that you'd like to submit and talk about further. But punchline being, let's get those together within the next three weeks and get them emailed to Logan by May 22nd. So depending on the nature of your questions or your inquiry, there may be things that Logan can answer back in writing or they may be things that you're going to want to have another meeting where he comes and you talk through things.
Okay.
Okay? So that's your first opportunity for public input on the Regional Future Land Use Map. The second is reflected by the number two here on your slide. You, Mendon, as a community, is eligible for the Tier 1B area under the location-based Act 250 jurisdiction. So, what does that mean? I will refer you to your prep packet, pages six, seven, and eight. You don't have to worry about the Tier 1A because you're not eligible for that. But you are eligible as a community for Tier 1B. And you'll need to make a decision by July 1, whether you would like to opt in for that or not. So what does that all entail? The location-based jurisdiction, as a result of Act 181, provided opportunities for either reduced or eliminated Act 250 jurisdiction in certain areas or expanded Act 250 jurisdiction in certain areas. And that is being kind of rolled out in a tiered system. So the Tier Ones are opportunities for either eliminated or reduced Act 250 jurisdiction. So that Tier 1A areas of the Core Four, right? From the downtown village to the, those, if you, if you received Tier 1 approval, all development would be fully exempt in those areas from Act 250 permitting. Which means, you know, you'd be, you'd be permitting that development at the local level using your local bylaws.
Does that include utility, like cell towers and stuff like that? That, that's not, sorry, that's not, that goes through the.
Yep. And you're not, you're not.
We're not 1A anyway.
No, no. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
I mean, you can ask the questions, but the community isn't going to be.
Yeah, we're only focused on 1B.
You're only focused on 1B. So what is eligible for reduced Act 250 exemption in Tier 1B areas, which would be part or all of your centers? So your hot pink village center, you don't have planned growth areas for your lighter pink village area. So in, just in those areas, housing and mixed-use development with 50 units or fewer on 10 acres or less would be Act 250 exempt.
Where are you saying, where are you reading that part?
I want to.
Oh, right there, okay, yep.
I'm just kind of paraphrasing.
Yep, yep. Just wanted to circle it, okay.
Yep. Okay? So, you know, this, the table of comparison of 1A, 1B areas has some really kind of important information about, you know, which areas are eligible, what are the exemptions, you know, which you have to enforce existing Act 250 conditions in those areas. In terms of 1B, there's, the application process is just agreeing to the areas as mapped in the Regional Future Land Use Map and then certifying to these other eligibility requirements. And I'm, I'm bringing tonight a paper copy of the 1B form just to leave with y'all. Because if you choose to opt in, that's the form that would have to be returned to the Regional Planning Commission by July 1. And there is a PDF fillable form available on the landing page for the Regional Plan Update, which is listed at the end of this presentation.
Okay.
Okay? So.
And this is your, I mean, obviously, our planning commissions and select board work closely, you know, together, but does this have to come from the select board?
Yes, it would have to mean, so you could delegate, the select board could delegate kind of the certification pieces to the planning commission and have or ask the planning commission to make a recommendation. And then the board could act on the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay.
That would seem reasonable to me, but again, you all have other policies, may have other local policies that I'm not aware of, like I just learned tonight. So, you know, talk to your town administrator, I think, to make sure that you're doing things in accordance with your own governing structure.
Okay.
So if I send this back to you, the Tier 1B form, whatever the end result of the dark and light pink areas are, if the town submitted that request to regional planning, those, and we met those criteria, those property owners would then be exempted from the Act 250 for land in that area if it met those criteria.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It ignores, Act 250 would remain in place for all the other land areas.
Yes.
Or largely.
Let's, we can talk about Tier, what Tier 2 and Tier 3 mean because they could potentially apply outside of, that would be your Tier 1 area if you opt in.
Right, and I guess that's what I was focusing on, is that. And so it's for those areas, the final result of those mapped areas
Yes.
for development that would meet that criteria less than and no more than would then ultimately become exempt if that plan.
From Act 250.
From Act 250, yeah.
If, if the development triggered Act 250 in those areas, it would be exempt from Act 250 permitting.
Right, but it would still, the town's.
Correct.
Plan would still fall.
Correct, your local bylaws would apply. The, the premise being, those areas have been vetted and identified as being appropriate for this type of growth. So you don't need to go through the additional burden of Act 250 because it's already been prescreened. That's, I think, the philosophy behind it, right? So outside of those areas, they will either be Tier 2 or Tier 3. Tier 3 is, I think, where the most expansion, most expansion for Act 250 jurisdiction would apply. And Tier 3 is intended to protect tropical natural resources that aren't currently being well-protected in the Act 250 process. Where the Tier 3 areas are going to be is the subject for the completely separate rulemaking process under the Land Use Review Board. So the new body that took over for the old Natural Resource Board. So that Act 250 board is now the LURB, the Land Use Review Board. So the Tier 3, where that's going to be and what that's going to look like, that is not even, that rulemaking, I don't think, has even started.
Right.
So that is to come at some point in the future. And, you know, at some point you'll know, you know, these areas are now considered Tier 3 if there's a type of development that triggers Act 250, right? Or we use other considerations.
Is it plausible, knowing that you can't read the future, unless you have a superpower that?
Yeah. We hear. Yes, but go ahead.
Is it plausible that if we as a community say to you, yeah, that looks good, that conservation, rural conservation area is great, but then the LURB down the road says, well, anything that's a conservation area is definitely.
I think that's a great question to put in writing.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Yeah. Because those are the things I think we'll want to think about before we say like, yeah, we're good with the map.
And our office is not going to be able to answer that question. They will certainly be able to pass it on to the.
Okay, all right.
And say, hey, this is, this is, these are the kind of inquiries we're hearing from our towns as we're trying to finalize the Regional Future Land Use Map. What can you tell us?
Right. And you'll at least be able to tell us so that when we have our conversations that, look, we're not promising you anything, but you could be in a position where if you lock into green lighting this.
I, I just think it's so early in the process that I, I don't know what you're going to get for answering.
Okay.
And just being honest.
Yep. All right, thank you.
So, did that help kind of square things away for you in terms of Tier 1B and areas that would apply?
Yeah.
And basically, once Tier 3 is mapped, Tier 2 would be anything else, all the other areas. And in Tier 2 areas, it's Act 250 as usual, with the exception of a new road provision, which is a.
The road rule.
Yeah, the road.
Yeah.
Okay?
And then one clarity thing. Whether the select board, you know, requests recommendation from the planning commission or they just do it on their own, that 1B request or application is only for that relief and it doesn't go into the, the 2 or the 3 designation?
Correct.
At all, it's really limited to just that because that's what you need the advance notice on?
Correct, it's just opting in for 1B.
Yeah.
That is it.
It does, because it's silent to 3, it doesn't waive the ability to comment on 3 or anything like that.
Correct, correct. And a town may choose, even though you're eligible, you may say, no, thank you, we're good, we don't want to opt in. You know, you're, there's no requirement, this is an option, right? So it's a, it's a, you know, opportunity that you need to discuss as a community and decide whether you think there are advantages or disadvantages that help inform your choice.
And, and not doing it would just leave those.
Act 250 as usual?
Yeah, just leave them where they are as it goes.
Exactly, exactly. Okay?
If, if something has previously been under Act 250 in those areas, does that make them exempt for further development there? That's?
No. So the Land Use Review Board will continue to enforce existing Act 250 permits and conditions in the 1B areas.
Okay.
So that is kind of a benefit to you that you don't have to take on the administrative burden of existing Act 250 permits if there are any in those areas. The LURB will continue to deal with those.
Okay.
So, those are the Mendon specifics, right? In terms of input on the Regional Future Land Use Map, I'll, I'll wrap things up for us and kind of take us back out or big picture as part of kind of the bigger face green engagement opportunities. So we, we fully recognize that the regional plan may not be the easiest document to read. It's down. It can, you know, it can be, you know, challenging to track. It's not going to be translated down and try to read cover and cover and think it's going to be great, right? So we're trying to take rather complicated information and a large volume of information and package it in a way that is still accessible for the general public to try to react to or understand. So the first way that we're doing that is in this visualization graphic that we worked with an illustrator to, in a very light and kind of more conversational way, highlight some of the priorities or things that are important about each of the topical chapters in the plan, right? It's really meant to be a quick, like, 30-second view. And it, it's, it's a little catchy. It reminds me of like the paper place mats that you get in some of the local restaurants that are more touristy and kind of showcase points of interest in Vermont kind of thing. So this, it's a similar kind of vibe where, you know, we've got the Rutland region and we've got, you know, some, some easy illustrative ways to convey some of the priorities. Okay? So this document, as well as our chapter summaries, right? Because everybody likes the check notes version of things. You know, you don't have a lot of time and you don't want to slog through the 250 pages. And maybe you're only interested in the housing topic or the economic development. We have now one-page chapter summaries for all of our topical chapters where you can see what is the goal for transportation or housing or climate resilience. You can see, remember I think earlier I talked about equitable and sustainable, kind of the core principles of healthy, equitable resilience? Each of our chapter summaries describe what we mean by that from the perspective of the subject that's being discussed. We then outline kind of current conditions, like what is the baseline for that particular topic that we need to have our arms around in order to understand where we, where do we want to go, right? You kind of have a baseline in order to measure progress towards achieving a goal. So the future trends section then lays out kind of what are some of the things that are shaping the direction of where we want to go and where is it we want to land? And then we wrap up with what's next in terms of a high-level summary of kind of the core policies for that subject. So it's an easy, free, it gives you a good sense of, okay, I kind of, you got a deeper level of detail than you do from the illustration. And it may spark your interest enough to maybe want to read the full chapter draft. So the full draft plan of, the full draft of our plan is going to be available in early June. And everything can be accessed off of the landing page, Rutland RPC backslash plan 2026. You can go there now. The graphic is posted there so that you can do that in more detail. The chapter summary is available there as is a digital, as are a digital copy of these slides and the PDF of your map and a link to the interactive online arc-based map of the Regional Future Land Use Map. So that has the advantage of, like, this is a solid background on this map. The digital online version has an ortho photo background. So you can kind of get a sense of the boundaries in relation to features in the ortho photo.
Like, the parcels are online?
So I don't know if Logan was able to get the parcel lines in there or not. I asked him to, I don't know if that's coming. But with the ortho photo, you can at least get a sense for, because the, the layer of the color for the land use category is opaque. You can see the ortho photo in the background. And you can zoom in. So if you wanted to zoom in on something, you know, you have the ability to do that. And if you click on one of the land use areas, it kind of halos and blue, so you can see the sharp boundaries and all that kind of stuff. So all of that information. So, all of that information is now online, available at rutlandrpc.org backslash plan 2026. So, you know, you have access to everything we've talked about in digital format so that you can share it widely and it's available as we continue your conversations as a community in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome. Thank you for all of your work.
Absolutely.
And your whole team.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's definitely been a great record.
So, we do follow up with Logan then, for our comments and for our future attempts.
Yep. So, kind of summarize on the map case. You've got four, four opportunities here. Weigh it on the map with any questions or boundary revisions. I will say, you know, you can't change the categories. You know, they're, they're, they're laid out in statute. That's what we're working with.
Okay.
But if there are, if there is finessing to some of the boundaries or, you know, hey, we're missing something here, you know, those conversations are available on a case-by-case basis to make potential changes to the category boundaries.
Okay.
Okay? Then you've got your Tier 1B decision to make. And then we hope that you provide us with answers to those two questions that I started the meeting with. Do the priorities reflected in the illustration, the chapter summary, or the draft plan reflect the right things for the community economic health for the region? And are you excited about what, you know, is, is on the horizon and maybe what lays you down your heart?
Awesome.
Yay!
Thank you.
That's my pitch.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you very much. So, our time...
Let's see. So, I think what we're going to do is, do you want to call, at the chair, do you want to call a recess?
Yeah, I mean, for, for the ZBA.
Yep. So, why don't we just say we're going to recess now for approximately 15 minutes? And then we'll reconvene in 15 minutes while the ZBA meets.
Okay. We're calling the Special Order of the Menden Zoning Board of Adjustment to address the Open Meeting Law Complaints filed by Mr. and Mrs. Brian Gates. Present is our four members of the board, myself, Terry Corsones, and Harvey Zara, who are appearing remotely, and Susanna Alfredo is present with me. Mr. Gates is here, and Mrs. Gates is on the remote access. The board was sent a number of complaints and because it was referred into a Board of Adjustment meeting on October 27th, the board, this board has to address it. And what we are going to do is review it with the board because this came in just last Thursday. So, we've got this note, meeting noticed. And before we respond to these complaints, the boards are going to have a deliberative session only, that's only going to last a couple of minutes.
Would you like to see the video of what we're using you up so you can actually see?
Mr. Gates, Mr. Gates, Mr. Gates, maybe I should repeat the instructions here. I'm going to chair this meeting. You will have the opportunity to speak when we're done and your speaking time is going to be limited to two minutes. There's, Mr. Gates, that's enough. You're on video.
I'm not supposed to be being video, just you.
No.
Yes.
Everybody's on video.
No, at the last meeting, it was only the people behind, never out. You're not supposed to be videoing out here.
Please.
I'm just saying, I know the rules.
You think...
That's why the last meeting, they weren't videotaping in the, in the field.
Mr. Gates, enough. I don't, I, I do not want to hear any more until your call, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. So, I would ask everyone except the board members to step out.
This conference will now be recorded.
And we're all being recorded again. The board has reviewed all of the complaints and discussed them. And the unanimous decision has, is that there is no violation set out in any of the complaints of the Open Meetings Act. And...
You locked the door on Carol and you didn't let her in.
Thank you. You'll have a two-minute opportunity as soon as I'm finished. The, so there's no cure necessary. And we will file our minutes of this meeting in the next couple of days. And that is all that the board has on the complaints. We do not think they constitute any violation of the Open Meetings Act. No one was denied access. Everyone was here when the meeting started on February 27th. And the timeline even as described was all before the hearing even started. And it was within two minutes that Mrs. Gates arrived, she was led into the office. The hearing...
She was not allowed in the office and told that the sheriff had to be there.
Mr. Gates, I'm not going to respond to you and you're not going to have a chance to talk if you can't control yourself. I'll be finished in a minute and you and your wife will have an opportunity to speak. So, that is our, that is the Board of Adjustment's response to your complaints and consistent with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law. This brings us to the final part of the meeting, and that is comment, comments by the public. Mrs. Gates, do you want to make any statements?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to start my timer so you don't screw me on any minutes. I'm ready to start. You ready? So, on that meeting night, Jack, didn't you go in with, with Gordy Stakes' lawyer and Mr. Stakes, members of the board, and lock the door behind you and have a conversation with them? Isn't that a violation of due process? Since when does a, since when does a client get to go in and talk to the judge with his, with his lawyer without the other potty present? Since when? When is that right? Because that isn't right. We have the video of you letting the public in without the sheriff and locking the door behind you. And then Carol tries to come and you don't let her in. But all the other members of the public are already in there. That's discrimination.
Megan Smith lied.
Megan Smith lied and said she didn't let him in, but we have the video of all you going in.
Together.
Together, without the sheriff. So, how is that? In 312 is pretty clear. 312 says, when, when there's a meeting, a hearing, the first person that walks through that door, the door is open to the public for all. Either no one goes in or everyone goes in. Otherwise, you're violating the open meeting law by having a fucking meeting by yourselves. And that's what you did. You violated our rights by having a meeting with our, with the client before we were even in the hearing, because he mentioned it in the open, in the, in the hearing minutes.
Mr. McPee mentioned that you should stop.
You are lawyers. You are lawyers. You should know better.
Your husband's a judge. You should know better.
Teresa, you're the worst. Your husband's the worst. You are anybody that thinks they're a lawyer. Oh, I'm going to cut my two minutes again because he stopped me. I'm going to start over. Thanks, Harvey.
No, you're not. No, you're not going to start over. Your two minutes are over. Thank you. Mrs. Gates, did you have anything to say?
Bad enough I got to look at her in church.
It's bad enough, she said. She has to look at Teresa in church. You guys are all fools. This is total discrimination, Jack.
That's enough.
No, that's, this is bullshit. Read the rules. 312. Read the fucking rules.
The meeting is over.
We'll see you in court.
Mr. Randy?
Yeah, that's our meeting. Carol, we are back.
Seth, if you could just note the time that we came back to order.
Yep. We will reconvene our Select Board meeting at seven, or six fifty-four. And where do we end off here?
Administrative orders or matters.
Administrative matters. So, signing of our orders.
I'm going to make the motion?
Uh, yeah.
So, I'll move to approve orders for 42425 in the amount of $13,937.73 and payroll for 4525 for $14,852.65 and payroll for 42825 for $13,765.61.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Administrative matters. B for the minutes for 41425. And we're going to table that.
Yep.
So, I will make a motion to table the minutes for 41425.
Okay. And then, number eight?
Okay, let's get that. Business. Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement 2025.
Okay. This is a routine adoption of our, of our Public Works Agreement. It will be attached to our Local Emergency Management Plan that you adopted at the last meeting. It requires a signature of the Select Board on the second to last page. It's flagged. And the last form designates Chris Baird with myself as a backup to be the requesting official or the one that responds to a request to request services from us. So, what it spells out, an agreement with other municipalities to be able to help out each other in a disaster if our town isn't being affected.
Mm-hmm.
And how do we help them out? People, power, equipment?
Yes.
Kind of stuff?
Pretty much all that.
Labor and equipment. And it sets forth the, the regular rates and our, the equipment rates established by FEMA.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, there's just, it says, there's just a blank line for Select Board. Do you want us just to both sign our names and just write Select Board Member? Like, it doesn't have our names?
It only requires one, so I would recommend, because, like, if Megan was here, she would sign as chair. So, Seth could sign as vice chair and...
Okay. So, why don't I make them, why don't I move?
Yeah.
That we approve it and authorize Seth to sign on behalf of the Select Board?
Perfect.
All right. So, I'll, I'll, I'll move that we approve the Rutland Regional Planning Commission's Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement for the Public Works Departments of its member municipalities and authorize that Seth Bridge sign it on behalf of the Select Board.
Okay. And I'll second that. I'm all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. We're all signed. And we've signed the orders.
Orders are signed.
And the last.
The last, oh, second to last, I think I missed. Rutland County Little League Facility Use Agreement for the Menden Recreation Area, 2025.
So, they, they have submitted an agreement and I actually am authorized to sign off on those agreements. But we are requesting that we waive the facility use fee for the Rutland County Little League to use our facilities. They have agreed in the past and, and again this year that they do a spring cleanup down at the ball field. And they will also place a porta potty during, during their season, which goes through July or goes to July. So, that, we're just recommending that you waive, make a motion to waive the facility use agreement fee.
Do you think that's a good idea?
Yes.
Yeah. I will make a motion to waive the fee for Rutland County Little League at the Menden Ball Field.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Baseball.
And then, the last piece is this letter? The Route 4?
Route 4 Speed Limit Reduction.
Right here. Did you see it? Or did I have it? I think I had it.
Yeah.
What did I do with it?
So, we just received it. I'll just give you a brief overview of it. So, they've accepted our request to look into reducing the speed limit on Route 4. They also anticipate receiving a letter from Rutland Town. And so, they have not yet received that letter from Rutland Town, but they would like to do that study together because it's kind of one stretch of property. So, you know, that's, that was the status, is that they've received our request and they're waiting for Rutland Town's request so that we can, they can do the feasibility study or whatever traffic studies they need to do together with the section of Rutland Town. So, I would just recommend that the Select Board of Menden follow up with Rutland Town to make sure that they're submitting their letter. Yep.
So, I would just informally nominate Megan Smith to do the follow-up since she's not here.
Yeah, right. No, that sounds good.
Yeah, unless you have something for us to think. I know she did some of the initial outreach. Okay. Or you, Sarah.
Yep. No, that's fine. And I don't think we need to take any action besides that is just to follow up with them on that they're submitting their letter. So, I will let Megan know about that.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, Sarah, you probably don't need it, but during the earlier part of the meeting, they did hand us the municipal request for the Tier 1B area designation. And I'll just leave it with all the documents.
Yeah. And so, you do have a copy of the presentation that you guys were reviewing? Okay, perfect. And I did jump on that website and all of the maps and stuff are on there. So, that is, I just want to attach the presentation to the minutes so that people can do it with our minutes as well.
Can I also recommend, yeah, that we put it on the, the website? And do you mind, perhaps I can ask our chair if she'd be willing to have, like, maybe on the next agenda, we talk about it? But I still think, like, in the meantime, if people want to send questions that they think we should send to Logan?
Yeah.
That perhaps you collect them, Sarah, and maybe, I know I'm going to have some questions, but, you know, if you want to just collect those and then we can look at those, maybe we'll invite Terry or other members of the, the Planning Commission, especially...
maybe we'll invite Terry or other members of the Planning Commission to specially attend that meeting and see if they have any other concerns or questions. Yeah, so you're going to request to put it on the Planning Commission agenda for May? Oh, so I was thinking that the select board would have to make the decision. So I was thinking that the... They do, but they would have an opportunity to pose questions. Got it. If they're, if they discuss it too. And then certainly we can invite them to the first meeting in May. Members to discuss it as a group. So that we submit something before the 22nd. Sure. And if you, I don't know if you were suggesting this, and I'm willing to do it, just to ask Terry to put it on our agenda for the Planning Commission in one of the upcoming meetings as well and make sure all the members have the presentation. I know a lot of the folks did attend the training, so... Yeah. And so, and we are talking about two different things. One, posing questions about the regional plan, but also the tier two reporting isn't due until July 3rd. Or the tier, sorry, tier one. Yes, that's not due until later. One B. The tier one B reporting, which is that form, July 1st. So we do have a couple of minutes. Yeah. Yep, fair enough. Yep. The only thing I think that is pressing then is just whether or not we have questions and any feedback to offer for the 22nd, like boundary line changes or things like that. Yes, yes. Okay. All right. So yes, I can post it online and I can gather questions. Okay.
Okay. Well, I think that brings us to our conclusion of our meeting and I'm going to move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
For a meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.